Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Ann, if you'd call the roll, I guess, first for City Council and then for the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Sure. Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Boring.
Here.
Mr. Genesis Zerker.
Mr. Gerber.
Here.
Okay, then we have Ms. Amber Rose Grooms.
Here.
And Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Newell.
Present.
Mr. Fishman.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
And Ms. Cramp.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Saleh will not be joining us tonight. She's out of state, I believe, and was told that John Reiner will join us in progress. I think that we're not certain about Mr. Keenan. Well, okay, then. Mr. Keenan's out of town. And I weren't sure of that. So, Marcia, you're going to kick it off here. Just a quick reminder regarding our microphones. Ann has reminded me that only four of us can be switched on at a time, so if you'll keep that in mind. Thank you. Marcia?
Good evening. Tonight is a follow-up meeting, a joint session from our January 17th joint session that we had. And at that meeting, we focused a lot on the new idea of making the River Corridor what we focus on first, looking at the opportunities and the challenges with regard to the River Corridor and what we could do in that area. And as a result of those discussions, tonight's meeting will provide more detail and the additional work with regard to some of the specifics, from infrastructure needs to how the infrastructure can tie into the private development. So, we'll start out with a quick reminder of where we were at the last meeting. And we do know that there are several members that were unable to attend last time, so if there's anything that you feel going forward, it would be helpful to go over what occurred in the first meeting, we'd be more than happy to schedule some time to get with you on that. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and just turn it over to Terry, and we'll get started.
Thank you, Marcia. As Marcia indicated, the meeting last time had a lot of emphasis on trying to get folks oriented to the development sites, some of the key assets along the corridor, some of the more detail on the priority public projects that have been identified, the kinds of issues that should shape the urban design and planning framework as they were moving forward. And we had some initial discussions on things like parks and their configuration, and pedestrian bridges, and where they ought to land, and those kinds of things. For this evening, some of the goals would be to take all that kind of design framework thinking to the next level, get a better understanding of the nature and extent of these opportunities, and these times they're informed with even significantly more private developer input because there are some key sites in this location either developers own or developers have the options to purchase and have dovetailed some of their planning to see to what extent our efforts on this align so that what we put forth seems to have some semblance to what developers might really do. We've added, you'll see a lot more definition to some of the public improvements in the project area and what has driven our thinking on those, so that you can give us your thoughts and feedback as well. Much more, I think, clear understanding of the relationship of those public investments, both to one another, how they create domino effects with regard to what can happen first and what can't happen in isolation versus those that can. And interestingly, understanding better, I think, the relationship of those projects to informing the, or being catalytic to the private development opportunities adjacent to them. We're also going to share some early-level measures of anticipated costs associated with these public projects, as well as the resultant private investment we think could occur in this quarter. Our assessment of some of the most critical public investments that we think will be needed to really unleash the opportunities of potential will be identified for you this evening. And we hope that based on all this, the city will have a better framework for guiding both private development decisions and designing and prioritizing its public investments. With that, we'll turn it over to our consultant team. I think Darren, you're going to lead it off here.
Thank you. I want to introduce quickly some members of the team from whom you'll be hearing tonight. We had a large team that worked on the project, but Chris Herman, my partner from MKSK, Brian Jones from Brian Kent Jones Architects, and Paul Endress, who is an architect and structural engineer from the West Coast, who's working with us on the bridge architecture. And we'll be walking you through this evening, as Terry said, some of the developments that we've made since our previous meeting. This is where we left off in mid-January. We talked a little bit about the focus area that we were working within, some of the key pieces of it, both public improvements and private improvements. There were a lot of moving parks at the time, there still are. But our goal since then is to get into a little more depth in the issues, add a little more detail, and make them a little more real. The first thing I want to do is orient you to a view that we're going to be looking at quite a bit tonight. We are floating several hundred feet above historic Dublin here, looking northeast. Let's see if I can get the laser going. This is Bridge Street, 161 in the lower right-hand corner, High Street, running on the left-hand side here, Riverside Drive on the other side of the river, and then at the very top up here is I-270, and this is Toller Drive just below it. Most of the views that you see will be from this vantage point. As we got into this, our focus area narrowed down quite a bit in terms of looking at both, as Terry said, where there is some private developer interest and some movement on certain parcels, and also where we have publicly-owned land and public improvements that are part of that. This is really about plus or minus 80 acres, sort of focused within this corridor area here that we looked at in quite a bit of detail. And one of the things we're going to do this evening is move right away and sink our teeth into the meat of this. This is a build-out, and this does not mean that anything is set in stone. This is to add some clarity to the vision, and I think most importantly, for the purposes of tonight and our work session, as I said before, is to make some of these items real. Let's put the scale to them, let's build them out, let's see what they look like, let's assign some character to them, let's look at some renderings, let's go through some preliminary engineering. These were all the steps that we've gone through. And as we started to look at the bits and pieces that added up to this vision, it was very hard in our mind to have a discussion about those without seeing the entire piece in context. So we have sort of jumped ahead right to the final build-out of this, in order to give you a sense, as we move ahead and we look at parks and we look at roads and we look at private development sites, how does that fit into the larger context of where we're looking? And again, just to orient you here quickly, because there are a few roads that have appeared in this, 270 is still up here at the top. There are some proposed roads that we'll talk about, and some proposed bridges as we move through this. There are some changes in terms of what's on the parcels and some configurations, but please interrupt me at any point during the evening if you have any questions. The first piece that we want to touch on this evening is take a looking at the east side. What we'll do is we'll break the, in terms of the agenda, we'll break the discussion into a look at the east side, a look at the west side, and then how those come together and how we bridge those. I think we'll probably have, you know, a brief break after each of those pieces so that we can engage in a little bit of discussion about what you've seen. One of the places where we wanted to start on the east side is with Riverside Drive. This is really a linchpin piece on the east side moving forward. It has impacts on future parkland, it has impacts on future private development, and there are certainly a number of engineering-related issues related to capacity and safety and movement on Riverside Drive and on the major intersections that we've gotten into a little bit. One of the driving considerations that we looked at with Riverside Drive, along with some of the engineering parameters, is how do we make Riverside Drive a Parkway? How do we make it a road that is within a park? It's adjacent to a new park on Riverside Drive. We showed an image last time of Commonwealth Avenue in Boston, where you have a gracious wide boulevard adjacent to development. And we took a look at how Riverside Drive relates to that development. It is a 40 mile-an-hour road, it likely will be as it redevelops, and there's a certain nuance to how the development relates to that speed. How do you get enough buffer so that you're comfortable on that roadway, but have the buildings close enough that the storefronts feel active and alive? And likewise for the park. How do you have a road that operates at that speed and that way adjacent to a park? And so we looked at Riverside Drive from several different angles. This is intentionally small, we're not going to get into any of the detail of this, but we looked at it from an engineering standpoint. We looked at issues of cut and fill and cost, utility issues, intersection distances, sightline distances, those sorts of things. It was done at a very preliminary level, but enough to help us advance the discussion of it. Likewise, we looked at several scenarios related to how Riverside Drive relates to the new Riverside Park. One of the driving reasons for the realignment of Riverside Drive is to create some real estate on the east side of the Souda River in order to create a park. And we'll get into the park in a little bit, in terms of its function and what it's intended to do. But with respect to how the road relates to that park, how high is it relative to the park, what's the speed, what's the edge-like between the road and the park? So we looked at a number of different scenarios to help develop the thinking on that. The second piece with respect to roadways on the east side is the roundabout. This is at the intersection of 161 and Riverside Drive. This is a piece that we won't get into a lot of detail this evening, but the roundabout, which has been studied by the City of Dublin and its consultants for a number of years now, is intended to address capacity and safety issues at that intersection. There have been some alternatives to look at signalized intersection as opposed to a roundabout. The current thinking is, is that the roundabout is the best and safest way to address a number of complex issues related to that intersection. So our challenge with this piece is, as the engineering develops and as the thinking moves ahead with this, how does it relate to our adjacent development in terms of access from that intersection, in terms of the character of the roundabout? And we'll talk about that a little bit as well. Then there are a number of interior streets that you see here on the east side. And one of the things that, as we have worked through this, there have been a number of different developers at various levels of interest and detail that have looked at some sites over here, and is to the distinct advantage of the City of Dublin, and it's a credit to the planning work that has come before what we've done, that the developers that we're working with that are interested in certain parcels on the east side, that we have the resources in place to keep our thinking current and up-to-date with the speed that they're moving. And it's a credit to the planning that's gone before that the alignment of what we're hearing the market has interest in is very close to the direction that came out of the vision plan and the planning foundation that's been established here. So when we talk about this roadway network, what we're looking at is really roads that create a neighborhood, create walkability, create access, allow pedestrians and vehicles to get to shared community resources. And these are likely to evolve and come online as the thinking with the private development continues. But the fact that those two processes are moving hand-in-hand is a distinct benefit to make sure that we can get the most leverage out of the private development sites and the most civic benefit out of the public infrastructure that's being put in place. Although it's a little bit of a long-range piece, we have also shown the potential for a future vehicular bridge. In previous discussions, there was a look at multiple vehicular bridges in addition to Bridge Street here, south of I-270. The current thinking is, is that the single vehicular bridge here, which is sort of at the terminus of John Shields Parkway, would be adequate to serve the traffic functions. And this is a little bit of a longer-term item, but we wanted to show it in terms of the future vision. The next piece we want to touch on are some of the parks and greens and civic spaces. I'm going to mention two smaller pieces, although they're not unimportant. One is a neighborhood green in here off of Mooney, which is a street which runs north-south between Riverside Drive and Toller Ridge. And the other is a piece that has grown out of the, excuse me, that's grown out of the vision plan and previous planning efforts that is along John Shields Parkway. And this is a greenway that connects all the way in some fashion or another to Sawmill at the eastern edge of the city. And this is a critically important link in terms of bringing the various neighborhoods as they emerge on the east side of the city to the river and to the heart of Dublin. The big one here is what we're calling for the moment, the Riverside Park, and that's the park that's being created largely from the realignment of Riverside Drive. Certainly what exists there today, although it's somewhat inaccessible, is beautiful. The native vegetation, the river valley itself, it really is a valley. It's gorgeous, and I think we want to capture and build on that as part of any development that happens there. That's really key, that's a kernel that I think should be consistent in any look at the park. But in addition to that, there's some need to create some usable land that is up at the Riverside Drive grade roughly. And really, this is intended to both respond to and encourage and stimulate the adjacent private development, as well as a general civic benefit for the community. We mentioned in our last work session, we found in a number of projects that we've worked in, in a number of cities, that there is a direct correlation between a well-designed, well-maintained, public green space and adjacent real estate value. And we're getting similar responses with the private development teams that we're working at, that that really is a tool that they have in their toolbox to help market their products, and it's advantaged to them as well. One of the things that we had a fairly robust discussion on in the last session was what's in the park? What is the program for the park? Does it have cafes? Does it have performance venues? What's in it? And we had similarly robust discussions internally with Dublin staff after the meeting, and we realized quickly that we did not have the luxury of time within the scope of this study to go through a full programming process and have a full design for the park. But I think what we wanted to touch on tonight are a few key things that at a minimum the park should accomplish. And I think these are all fairly straightforward, but one is have some flexibility. When we went back and looked at the park from the previous alignments that we had shown in our last work session, we have almost doubled the acreage that we had shown previously in terms of the, I'll say "flat," but the usable green space that you see in this top image here as distinct from the nice steep wooded slopes that are there. And that was really to respond to some very good comments about, given that we don't know what the program of the park is going to be, how do we program, how do we leave some flexibility for the program in the future? I will say that we have worked on both sides of that equation. In terms of the size of the park, we've also looked at the developable ground on the east side and how that's influenced by where Riverside Drive is aligned. So we've been working on both sides of that issue. There are a couple other key components of the park. One is the future development of trails north and south along the Souda River that connect to other public green spaces, both in the water, you know, recreational watercraft and recreational trails that are on land. That's a key component, and I know there's some pieces that are starting to evolve from that, but we want to make sure that we fully connect and embrace all of those north and south along the river. And then the last one, as we start to talk about the pedestrian bridge and how we connect the east and west sides and the merits of that connection, that's an important function of this park as well. Right now, because of the lack of real estate on the east side, there's very little room for a bridge to land. And when you look and we talk about the volumes of pedestrian traffic that may be generated and the uses that would be adjacent to where the bridge lands, that's an important function of the park as well. And certainly, in this last view, when we talk about the vegetation that's there and how we can thin some invasives and open up some vistas and views, there are some views of the river that will, in some ways, I think, reveal an asset that's overlooked in a lot of ways right now, just because it's so heavily wooded there. So I think that's going to be a nice balance. And these are things that, sort of independent of what the final program is from the park and what the uses are to get established, these are really the core components of how that park should function. The other thing we did as we were moving ahead and looking at the decision, how we advanced this discussion, we wanted to show some references of parks that I think most of us would be familiar with. Two of them are downtown riverfront parks in Columbus, Genoa Park, which is right in front of Cosi, which is a little over four acres, and supports a number of festivals and activities, Water Fire, Latino Fest. There's all sorts of activity that takes place in that acreage very successfully. We looked at North Bank Park, just a little further north up the river, which is another acre or so in size. And again, from red, white, and boom to other groups, you see the park functioning both for daily activity for the adjacent residents and also being able to support major civic events. Next, in terms of size, would be the Riverside Park as currently proposed. And certainly, these acreages, again, are not set in stone. This is just the current thinking and an order of magnitude. So you can see, relative to some of these, we have a reasonable amount of real estate to accomplish the future programming that may be plugged in. And then the last one here locally is Ballantre Park, in terms of comparison, where we've likely been out there and experienced that park and sort of have a feel for the area and the real estate that's part of that. I'm going to have Brian join me up here, if you would. We're going to get a little bit into the potential for private development on the east side. And I say "potential," what we've shown here is really our charge was to create a framework plan. And what that framework plan, what that process has entailed is working both with private developers on sites that are in play in terms of their involvement, and also taking a long view in terms of what the future potential for other sites in this study corridor could be. So we've put some numbers attached to it just to help us all get a sense of the order of magnitude of what the potential is for development, although, again, these don't represent any specific development proposals. I want to start here at 161 and Riverside Drive. And as we look at the east side, we're going to talk about the west side in a little bit, there are two very different areas in terms of how you go about looking at private development. Historic Dublin on the west side is complex. Everything from the nuance of the historic architecture and making sure that we fit carefully into that historic fabric, to the fact that there are smaller sites, smaller floor plates and footprints to deal with, and how those relate to what the demand from the market is. Parking is an issue that's not as easily solved on those tight sites and narrow streets. The east side is different, partly because it is not as heavily developed. It's more of a greenfield site. Certainly bedrock is always an issue out there. But we had the luxury of looking a little more freely in terms of how these developments lay out on these sites. And what we're going to do is we're going to move north from 161 and Riverside Drive up here and talk a little bit about these pieces. And Brian, please interrupt me so I'm not the only one talking all night as we go here. There's a density that you see on the east side that is greater than the west side, and I think there's some value to that for a number of reasons. One is that, I mentioned, Riverside Drive does carry a fairly good volume of traffic. And the architecture that is adjacent to that road needs to hold that edge. Certainly, we've learned from a perceptual standpoint, not necessarily a sort of hard engineering rule, but when you have items like street trees and you have architecture that forms an edge, these are perceptual cues to motorists that help them understand when they see pedestrians, when they see outdoor dining, when they see street trees. These are small cues that help them understand that this is an urban environment, it's a mixed-use environment, it's a pedestrian environment. So it's important for us, for that architecture, to hold that edge and serve those cues. And I also think that there's frankly the wonderful benefit of being able to have the density on that side to create almost, we sort of loosely use the phrase, a 21st century downtown. The historic Dublin is wonderful, and it's where the energy and excitement is, and we have the opportunity on this side to bookend that historic piece with something that may take on a different architectural character, may take on a different density, and there's some great opportunities within that. And among the pieces that we have explored all throughout this corridor, it would be characterized as mixed-use. We've looked at space for office, we've looked at active ground-floor uses in terms of where we can have retail and have activity on the ground floor, and then quite a bit of residential. And one item that we had explored here was the opportunity for a limited-service hotel, and certainly that 161 Riverside Drive intersection could really benefit from an architectural landmark and a strong architectural piece at that intersection, and that may be the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, and just Darren, to build upon that, great introduction. I think one of the things that we've really looked at as we started to dial into the scale and the magnitude of the park itself is just its civic character. And nowhere do we have the opportunity to really reinforce that edge with a new urban expression along this new roadway system. Certainly as we move forward and you see some more things from Darren and from Paul with regard to some of those streetscape characteristics, I think it'll help express some of the architectural components. But what you start to see in this very simple massing diagram is that wherever a bridge lands, whether it's a pedestrian bridge or whether it's a vehicular bridge, we're really trying to make an iconic gateway experience to that new, literally, these bridges become the bridge from the old town to the new town, if you will.
Moving north along Riverside Drive, again, we're looking at, oops, excuse me, a mixed-use development here that has retail and office on the first two floors with potential for residential above, potential up to four floors of residential above in the schemes that we've been looking at. And in all cases, we've worked very hard, looking at that section again from Riverside Drive to the building, to say if we're going to have front doors, if we're going to have retail storefronts, if we're going to have outdoor dining, we think that can be compatible with Riverside Drive. We think there's a design solution which marries those, and we think it has to. When you have a park that's just on the other side of Riverside Drive, we want Riverside Drive to feel like it's in the park, and we want the buildings, the residences above, the retailers, we want them all to feel like they're in the park. So I think there's some rich opportunities there to really sink our teeth into the design of that, but we think that can happen. We think all of that is compatible. And in this case, one of the advantages that we have of this density and the fact that structured parking would be part of these solutions, is that we have a great opportunity on the east side within this area that we're looking at to potentially avoid surface parking lots. That seems like sort of a small detail to bring up, and it may seem an inconvenience in some ways to point that out. But one of the things that we had talked about internally, which I absolutely love about the City of Columbus, is its near-downtown neighborhoods. When you look at Grandview Heights and Italian Village and Victorian Village and German Village, you've got this density that the fire department doesn't like, you know, the service department doesn't like, the roads are hard to navigate, but you've just, you've got this great density. You've got row houses, you've got apartment blocks, you've got doubles. You've got this wonderful sense of an urban neighborhood. And to the extent that we can accommodate the functional aspects of it that really are difficult in some of those historic urban neighborhoods, but create that fabric and that feel and avoid the garden apartment that sits in a floating area of parking, I think we have a wonderful opportunity to do that if we can solve a structural parking solution. And what that allows us to do is that allows us, as we move east into these neighborhoods, to look at some attached products, to look at some townhomes, to look at some row houses, to look at density that in aggregate across both what's on Riverside Drive and what's immediately east to it, a very dense urban neighborhood. But looking at a diversity of types of products, we looked in Plan View, and I should have put an exhibit up here that compared, if you look at historic Dublin compared to the footprint that we're looking at on the east side, you can see that there's the opportunity to create sub-districts in areas of character. Just because this is an outline of a study area that we've defined does not necessarily mean or should be homogeneous in character or homogeneous in product. So we want to create civic spaces, we want to create different types of architecture, different densities, to create that variety and interest in those different neighborhoods.
And Darren, to build upon that, I think one of the things that the project we've worked on collectively is a neighborhood launch project on Gay Street. And as you start to think about the expression of these urban neighborhoods that could occur up the hill, if you will, they too would have these little pocket parks and like gain an expression that, you know, really builds that diversity of community within this new, in this new larger block.
And then this again shows the numbers that might be able to be achieved, oops, with the build-out here on the east side, in terms of a really great density neighborhood, a substantial amount of office square footage, again, the active storefronts, and the potential for a significant amount of private investment. And then the other thing I'd like, Brian's going to walk through, I'm going to tell you what these little funny triangles are. We have some illustrations that we'd like to show that better develop the character of these. And these red arrows represent view sheds. So in the first view, we would be standing on the Bridge Street sidewalk, looking north along the river here.
Paul should be up for this one. But this starts to depict some characteristics looking northward up the river, depicting this fabulous iconic bridge that Paul has developed. And you start to see as the bridge moves eastward that it's sort of anchored by another architectural expression in the building forms that start to anchor that landing zone.
And this is a view, if you were coming across the pedestrian bridge, east, onto the east side, just before we land, we'll be looking at the intersection of Dale Drive and Riverside Drive here.
So here you start to see the pedestrian bridge sort of winding in this sort of interesting curvilinear form that aligns with the Dale Drive existing road system that's sort of anchored by these more modernist buildings that, again, you know, the architectural icons are not intended to express a dictated architectural vocabulary, but they are trying to set some goals relative to a place that really is that place for the next century. You start to see some landing zones to the right and even, you know, the You start to see some landing zones to the right and even, you know, the notions about program components of the park that really start to have retail components and service components potentially to the park itself.
Brian, real quick question. Is the elevation of either end of the bridge roughly equal in these seams, these schemes? They've raised Riverside Drive, obviously.
They're pretty close. They're within five feet, which across that span is very flat. The last view on the east side is from the new park looking south, and you'll see a little bit of the development on the left-hand side and the river here on the right. And I think, Brian, you know, this is one that I mentioned earlier, this really gives you a sense of the importance of some sense of density and height to create that volume and that enclosure. And it just really nestles the road very nicely right in here between this development and the parkland.
And we've been, we've had the benefit of looking at these images for a while and debating SketchUp models and what we should show. I think this one does a really great job of depicting the scale of the park. If you sort of look to the right-hand side of the image and you see the bridge structure off to the right-hand side between a couple of trees, you get the sense of the scale of the park very gently rising as you move eastward to the left. And then these buildings that are really set upon this plinth that could be a very strong pedestrian promenade that overlooks the park.
So if this pace is okay, we can continue on to the west side. We can also take a break if you'd like to dig into some thoughts on the east side here. Want to keep moving? Getting, okay, great. We're going to walk through a similar set of slides to look at the west side here. We were exploring a slightly more limited area on the west side in terms of the amount of real estate. And in terms of the roadway network, there is no proposals that we're showing here that would create new roads on the west side. But I did want to highlight three, they're going to receive a different level of traffic, and we may consider how those would either be upgraded from a pedestrian facility standpoint or maybe a street parking standpoint or other. High Street along this stretch, we have 94 North High here, 100 North High here. And this is a street that narrows down as you start to move to Indian Run, which is going to get some great frontage and really pull that historic edge, that historic fabric north. And I think as that happens, we would probably want to look closely at how the road serves that frontage. And similarly, there's some issues at the north and high intersection, which we want to address as well. We've started batting around a little bit and have not fleshed out in any detail, but when we look at the potential for a pedestrian bridge that lands at North Street and lands at Dale, and where those streets, where North Street intersects High and where Dale intersects Riverside, do we consider things like a pedestrian-only phase at those signalized intersections? Or some way that we can accommodate and recognize that there's going to be a great volume of pedestrian traffic moving through there? And to that end, North Street's another one that may bear a little bit of look in terms of the pedestrian facilities there and where the pedestrian bridge lands and how we bring people into the historic district comfortably. I think the major one that I wanted to touch on, which unfortunately, we picked a view that doesn't show it very well, is North River View. North River View right now has a public component which runs south and terminates right at Bridge Street. And then as you move north, it's a private drive which takes you down to parking lots that serve 94 and 100 North High. One of the things that, as we start to develop the riverfront park here, that's very important, is that we create frontage on that green space. I think in all cases, we're recreating civic spaces, community spaces, public spaces, public parks, to have public frontage on those and convenient and understandable public access to those is critical, to the extent that they're not buried behind back doors or buried behind buildings or feeling like the rear end or the service end of development. That's very important for us. And I think as the North River View piece here, which is moving a little bit further along, and as 94 and 100 North High develop at some point in the future, I think we'll want to look closely at that North River View road and how can that be built to accommodate that public frontage that we want to create on the new riverfront park. The Riverside Park on the west side, not to be overlooked, is of somewhat different character than the east side. It's heavily wooded, it's very naturalized, it's got some low flat areas, some floodplain areas. And our sense on this side of the river is that the hand may be very light in terms of what types of park improvements happen in that area. We want to create some more access to the river, again, access to trails. We want to connect the pedestrian bridge level and the North Street landing down into the park. But by and large, this is a very scenic, naturalized park area and would probably be developed with a fairly light hand. And then we have a couple of parcels that we're looking at in terms of urban framework. The North River View project, which is a little bit further along in terms of process, is again, a mixed-use project, which is going to be a wonderful anchor right here at Bridge Street as you come into historic Dublin, that has retail and restaurant component, office as well as some residential. We have 94 North High, which has a similar mix of uses in terms of how it sort of builds into the existing fabric here. And then lastly, we looked at 100 North High. And in our previous discussion, one of the options that we explored for 100 North High was a future site for the Dublin Library branch. We'd had several discussions with Pat Lysinski and his team. Our thinking, where we are in the process, is a little bit further along than where the library is, enabled in terms of their ability to make some definitive decisions. They've been talking internally a little bit about the model for the library. And we talk about the development in historic Dublin, and even on the east side now, it is an urban model for a library. There may be a structured parking component, there may be multiple stories. And a library, similar to our previous work session, is still sort of sifting through issues relative to their obligation to serve their patrons and whether that is best served by an urban model or a more suburban model or where that best location is. So that's fluid, and we're continuing to work with them and look at some various options. But I think one thing is going to be helpful is as they have started to bring on some consultants to help develop their thinking a little bit, that'll inform a little bit as we start to look at various sites for 100, or excuse me, for the library. And again, these are some total numbers that could be achieved. These, again, I would characterize as development potential in terms of what might happen on these sites. And I think as opposed to the east side, as I mentioned before, there is a cap to that development potential, which has to do with the character of historic Dublin. And it's very, a very fine line between developments that will pencil out financially and how that works and what's a mass and a scale and a height that's appropriate in historic Dublin. So those are all issues that we're working through as we look at these sites. We'll go back to little triangles here and share with you some character images. This again is from the Bridge Street Bridge looking north, and we'll see a little bit of the view of the North River View development. And I do want to say with this image that we have taken a little bit of artistic license with respect to the architectural details of this. We've worked very closely with the developer to try and make sure that we are true to the massing and the mix of uses and, you know, ultimately how the site would function. But we have, we've looked at a little bit detailing that is in advance of where that project is in the approval process. So this is a little bit of a fast-forward look ahead.
And that's a great qualification, Darren. Again, I think one of the things that we've been trying to establish, both with sort of this image, because it is a spring point, it's the gateway as you come across the bridge from the east westbound, and it, you know, just acknowledging that a building that has the characteristics and scale and aspects of historic Dublin is really critical. And as we look at the architectural framework for that area, making sure that scale, proportion, fenestration is, are things that we're really supporting that, supporting that existing district, you know, conversely, on the east bank, we think that, you know, larger scale and larger buildings that support that larger civic space are more appropriate.
Excuse me, is that a boardwalk of sorts that's running along the base of the building, sir?
Right along here?
Yeah.
It's a patio level that is at street grade, but then you drop down to North River View. And so there's parking below from that side. You'd have some great views of the park and the river from up there. And this is a view from the park looking south. And again, this is a very naturalized park area here. Steal a little bit of thunder from Paul, but he's going to talk a little bit about the development of some ideas around the pedestrian bridge. But certainly, you can see that front and center here, a little bit of the North River View development up to the right-hand side that we just saw. And this is the existing 161, the Bridge Street Bridge here in the background.
And Darren, just to build, this is probably obvious to everyone, but having spent more time recently sort of in the underbelly of that beautiful structure, what's really exciting about this park from an architect's standpoint, at least, and I'm sure from a, you know, from a person who lives in the city, is just the way that this park, both in the lower areas of it with the pedestrian experiences, but also the bridge introduction to the existing bridge and that that structure is just going to be a really amazing, amazing surprise, I think, to the visitors.
Next, I think we're going to talk a little bit about bringing the east and the west side together. Now, Paul, if you want to join me up here, we can walk through some thoughts on this. We pulled an aerial view from 1957 and a comparable view from today. And this red outline roughly shows the area that we've been studying. And one of the things that I think you can immediately see is that really this site has remained largely under, you know, under, undeveloped in the last half-century. And that's interesting to us, given the growth that's happened in Dublin and other parts of central Ohio. And I think it'd be an overstatement to say that it's a result of any one factor, but certainly, we're interested in unlocking that development on the east side and how that can spill over as you continue to move further east. And that is one of the primary benefits of looking at this pedestrian bridge. We had, we talked last time, and I think there was a pretty well consensus, both from the discussion we had with the joint work session and internally with staff, that there is great benefit to the landing locations here at North Street on the west side and Dale Drive on the east side. And one of the things that, as we've worked through the discussion of the pedestrian bridge, we personally, as an urban design firm, have a standpoint on the value of the pedestrian bridge. Paul's going to share some of his thoughts on working on many bridges in many different cities and, you know, and talking through with Dublin staff and the experience here locally, and even with the private development teams that we've been interfacing with, the pedestrian bridge is a piece that has tremendous potential to, again, unlock the development on the east side. Terry and I were talking before the meeting, and I think it's logical to assume that the east side would develop in some form or another without the pedestrian bridge. But as we have discussions with private developers, those that are closest to the market and what the interests may be, the sense is, is that the difference between a pedestrian bridge and no pedestrian bridge is going to be a strong component in terms of retail viability, where it struggled there to date. It's going to be a strong component with respect to what's the residential density that can be achieved. It's going to have an effect on both sides of the river in terms of being able to take the energy that's in historic Dublin now and supporting those existing businesses and restaurants with the density that would potentially be on the east side. There's a number of benefits that we see to the pedestrian bridge in terms of really creating some momentum on the east side and allowing that development at a density and a character and a scale that we think is wonderful to spill over. And I'm going to let Paul go into more detail and talk a little bit about some examples in his experience.
So we wanted to, I wanted to first start, talk about some of landings and how a bridge can integrate very well into the urban fabric. This is a project that we did for Providence, but you can see in the foreground, a café, and just how a bridge can seamlessly integrate into an urban environment. I also wanted to talk about the Sundale Bridge. This is in a community in northern California with 84,000 people. It was in a depressed downtown. And after the bridge was built in this area, the neighboring, the neighboring museum saw a 42% increase in attendance. This bridge attracts more than a million visitors a year in a town of 84,000. The city manager said in 2011 that this bridge brings in more than $1 million in economic revenue by visitation every year. This is it in an aerial view, close to opening days, but you can see how popular and how these types of bridges can bring people in. This is one of our bridges. This is on the 150 Mile Bay Trail in San Francisco Bay. This was adjoining two separate city parks. And if you notice very closely, that it was built under high tension lines, so it was an area that was quite blighted before. And this has become an icon and identifier for the neighborhoods that are around it and have become a very successful part of the two parks that surround it. Another bridge that has brought in economic development is the one in Greenville, South Carolina. This is a very special bridge. If you notice, on the outside of it, it's supported by a suspension cable, only on the outside edge, the inside edge is completely free. This is it at night. It has these very iconic tower forms and also a bridge deck that is lit up under the handrails, making a very safe passage for visitors, both to come see the bridge but also to pass by it. As I said, it was a very special bridge. If you look at the edge, you can see that it's only lifted up on the outside edge vertically. It acts as a horizontal arch, so the top surface of the bridge deck is pushing to the right. And below that several feet, there's a cable, and that cable pulls to the left, and it writes the twisting force of the bridge being only lifted up on one edge. Currently in the world, there are five of these bridges. There's only one in the United States, this is only one. It is about 345 feet long, about 12 foot wide, and this one is about, was about $1,000 per square foot for the design of this bridge. It comes to how we approach the design of the bridge, what we looked at. We first approached the bridge from an economic standpoint, looking at the number of towers that we would need. Because the elevation of the surface of the bridge and the ground below it is somewhere between 30 and 40 feet, the number of towers is a critical issue. And this is the three-span option, but if you notice, if you look at the right pier, you can see that the pier exists directly in the waterway currently. We don't feel that this is a safe design. We also have the four-span option that also has that same problem. And with four spans, the towers themselves require as much structure to hold up the bridge deck as potentially another structure just for one single tower. We also looked at a two-span arch concept, very similar to the historic bridge to the south, but we felt that this had too much material to focus on. And we spent most of our time looking at a single tower concept. Now, the single tower, because of it, has less material than the four-tower concept. And we looked at three different types of a single tower. This is a rendering for another one of our projects, Lewis Eaton Bridge, but this is a cable-stayed concept, which was one of the ones we looked at. And then we looked at a straight suspension bridge with a tower in the center. And then we also looked at a different alignment for that. This is the straight alignment, so this could be done in a cable-stayed option, which I had just previously shown, and also a self-anchored suspension bridge. And we also looked at, oops, a S-shaped alignment. And the S-shaped alignment seemed to fit more naturally in the urban grid. If you can look at Dale Drive on the right-hand side and how seamlessly it fits into the urban environment across that gap between the two streets. So we focused most of our time on the suspension-type bridge with one single tower and the S-shaped curve for the reason that I have described. I'm just going to go through very quickly some of the towers that we looked at to try to form an iconic tower. Now, one of the things that was also in the discussion that we looked at was how high these towers should be. If we did a clear-span bridge across a 700-foot span, we felt that it was not economical and that the towers on either of the banks would be about 100-foot high, which we think is too tall for the historic neighborhood on High Street. So we is too tall for the historic neighborhood on High Street. So, we came up with a single tower concept, and we used concrete that would be, have a texture that's very similar to the stone that is found on the historic neighborhood, and also the, the bridge just south of there, just a few blocks. And that single tower, we call this a teardrop. If you look inside, there's a space of a teardrop inside. But below the bridge deck, you'll see the arched form very easily integrates with the historic arch bridge just to the south of it. So, both in form and in texture and material, we've tried to keep this new bridge part of the old historic fabric. Now, in three dimensions, go back one. In three dimensions, this bridge is anything but traditional. It has a single tower, as I said. It's also one of the types of bridges that I just described, the self-anchored, it is a suspension bridge, but it is also part of the ring cable family, just like the Greenville Bridge. This bridge would be the longest ring cable bridge in the world. And also, the ring cabling also provides a very, very minimal structure so that it is a more economical type of bridge. I apologize for the lighting. It's, our renderings appear very, very dark here. So, you can see the surface of the bridge deck is lit up so that you can have that very, very light effect as you cross the bridge. This is the iconic tower. The tower would not only be seen from the historic neighborhood, but could also be seen from 270 and neighboring streets. At night, it could be lit up and become an icon and in time become an identifiable element of the city of Dublin. So, I'm going to pass this back to Darren.
One of the goals coming into this work session after, after our last discussion was to help organize the discussion a little bit in terms of how the private development and the public projects work together. What's a logical sequence for those? Are there any enabling projects that need to be first in order for other things to happen? Which of these projects are really going to be most catalytic in terms of driving and stimulating private development and, you know, generating the greatest civic benefit for the city of Dublin? And, and we started with that last question, which is, which of these are the most catalytic projects? And certainly Riverside Drive, as we mentioned before, is an incredibly important piece for this as we move ahead in terms of establishing the character for the development that's on the east side, allowing us to have the real estate to create the park here on Riverside. And as we discussed before, it also gives us the opportunity to have a gracious landing for the pedestrian bridge. And I'll add one thing to what Paul said as well. When we, when we look at the pedestrian bridge across there, the, the span is significant. It's about double the length of the Liberty Bridge in Greenville. And in planning circles, we, we talk a lot about walking sheds, pedestrian sheds, which have to do with the likelihood of someone to walk a certain distance from their car when they're accessing something in their neighborhood, or they're walking to a transit stop, or whatever it may be. We use these five and 10-minute walking sheds. And when you look at 700 feet to cross the river, it's a very significant distance to cross, if you think about, you know, walking across the 161 Bridge, the Bridge Street Bridge today. And there's certainly a component that we've talked about internally as we look at this bridge, and what is the value in creating an experience with that crossing that's more than just a utilitarian sort of A-to-B movement, that's going to really encourage people to make that move across there? And what do we do at either end that's going to be exciting and help, and help people move across? So, this is all part and parcel with how we address Riverside Drive, the intersection where the pedestrian bridge ties in. This is a very important project moving ahead. Obviously, the pedestrian bridge is one that we think has great benefits in terms of the viability of development here and strengthening the historic core of historic Dublin and the Riverside Park itself. And that has some similar advantages, both for the private development and certainly creating that core civic signature city space at the heart of your historic district and bridging the gap between your historic downtown and, and really your, your new dense development on the east side. This is a critically important piece. And we've shown it extending all the way up to 270 here, and certainly the idea that it would go both north and south through trail connections in the future is very strong. There are a number of supporting public projects that, that we've talked about that will help move things ahead. We've talked about North River View, High Street. There's certainly some internal streets here. These seem to emerge to us and our thinking as being among the most catalytic in terms of driving development forward. And in terms of enabling projects, there's a certain sequence there as well, that, again, Riverside Drive and its relocation unlocks the ability to look at the pedestrian bridge and how it lands. And then the park is really sort of intertwined and intermixed with both of those. And the other thing we've done is we've taken a quick look at taking all the numbers that we presented before for the east and west side and said, when we start to talk about public improvements and public investment, not expense, public investment, and what that may generate, what the potential is for that support, this may be a long-term vision. There's certainly many years until you get that full build-out and full absorption. But it's very encouraging to be looking at these numbers, both internally with professionals on the staff and our consultant team, as well as the private developers we've been working with, to give some realism to these numbers and realism to the vision. Terry, I don't know if you want to add anything, or?
I think the goal here, as we discussed at the beginning, was...
Thank you much.
Was to hope that we would convey the unique opportunity that Dublin has here. The amount of potentially developable land in the core of a suburban city that has grown as much as we've grown in the last 40 years is really extraordinarily rare. You consider that piece of real estate being located, or those real estate parcels being located adjacent to probably our greatest natural asset, the river, also is a bit of a unique opportunity. We also seem to be aligning where we're at a time where these kind of projects being presented to developers, five years ago or even three years ago, we were getting some funny stares. And now it seems to be increasingly where the developers are saying this is the kind of stuff they're looking for doing. So, there's that convergence of, of kind of developer interest and markets. And I think part of that is driven by the demographics, the kind of analysis that we were doing before. Probably overwhelmingly, the, the young professional kind of empty nester pieces of the, of the market increasingly seeking these things. The sheer array of housing types that gets provided here that, that are not provided are provided in a very, very limited fashion in the city at all today, and the volumes at which they're provided in, and the quality of the environments that they occur in, and the efficiency of the land use with which they are done, as well as traditional, if you think the traditional amount of infrastructure that would be needed to support this much development done in a typically suburban way, it would be a massive amount of acreage, massive amount of roads and other, other improvements being done to do that. I think it's important that we stress that, that there's a lot of things still need to get done with regard to the analysis. We need to assess the public-private partnership opportunities in much more detail, understand the TIF analysis. You heard a lot about structured parking and those kinds of things going with this. We've begun that analysis, and we want to incorporate as much of that thinking into our final report here as we can. Obviously, city manager and finance folks with council have to assess financial resources in terms of where things get done and the capital planning implications of doing them. The timing of opportunities have to consider market and financial conditions. We know we have some things happening with multifamily and the ability to fund some of these development types that may be a limited window, may not be. So, how we, how we integrate with that is important. Although much of this is greenfield site, you also see things here that involve redevelopment. Redevelopment has a whole different set of challenges with it that we need to consider and, and work through. We need to continue to assess library opportunities in this geography. And obviously, all of the affected stakeholders have to be fully engaged in this process as we move forward in the planning effort. But I'm hoping we've accomplished kind of some of the major objectives as we discussed in our last meeting with this effort. And I think we'd just like to open it up for discussion at this point. Liz Marsh has anything else to add?
Thanks, Terry. And thank you, Darren, and your team, everyone. Meryl, you want to lead off our discussion? You have some comments you'd like to make?
Well, first of all, I think it's magnificent. And I like the continuation of the development of looking more real to us as we continue to move forward. I really like the bridge. It's interesting you would call it a teardrop. I saw it as a wishbone, but whatever. I think it's really interesting. We have been to Greenville, so we're familiar with that. And we all loved it. I don't know, it seems like five years ago now, but I don't think it's been quite that long, but could be that long. Has it been that long? And I think they have, as your picture demonstrated, they have a little bit different of an environment there than we have. But I think we don't even know, truthfully, what the environment is we have because it's hidden right now. So, when it opens up, what we will be able to visually see with the river and the, you know, the rocks and everything else, the formations and all, will not be like Greenville, but it'll give us a different feel for this style of bridge. I actually was pleasantly surprised, and I know Marcia's going to kill me for saying this, but at the price of the bridge, I didn't think it was as bad as I thought it was going to be. I had a couple questions if I might ask. These are just random kinds of questions I had. But compared to downtown Columbus, the pictures that were shown of the river there and the Scioto Mile, what is the width of our river at this point versus downtown in front of Co-Si and all?
It's, it's narrower for a very short time. You may know we're, we're looking at removing one of the low-head dams downtown to restore it to a more natural water course. So, I think we're probably half or less of the width of what's downtown, although it'll be very comparable once that, that width is restored downtown.
So, they're going to narrow it?
Yes.
Okay. It kind of, the reason I asked that question, well, because, of course, we're showing downtown, so we want to make sure we understand that, that visually, we're going to look different than they look. On the other hand, I have been promoting since your last presentation, that I think it would be fabulous to be able to talk about the beginning in Dublin and the ending in Columbus of the Scioto River. And in both places where you have this drama, so to speak, to begin and end that experience for people. And, you know, along Fischinger and all, we have the kayaking and water skiing and all that takes place. So, there is an opportunity, I think, to build that excitement and sort of a market that you could brand how that brings together the central community of this region, really. So, I think it helps all of us in looking at it in that context. And, and that there would be differences, as our bridge is quite different than the one downtown. But still, there would be the bridge concept and a pedestrian element to both the beginning and the end of that. Another question I had was, and you may not be able to answer this, but we've been talking to the library now for several years, and we, you know, we understood some of the, the challenges they were facing with not being able to really consider Dublin at a higher priority earlier on. But do you have any sense of a final timeframe here that they can make a decision about Dublin? Because it really influences this project for us. And we don't, we, we don't want to be hindered by that, but we also want to respect and incorporate them into this area.
It's underway.
Yeah, I had communications with, with Pat last week regarding this effort here, and we, we got a clear understanding, I think, of some of the things they're trying to, to weigh on this. I think from a timing perspective, I mean, what we want to do is make sure that we have vetted all the reasonable opportunities in this piece of the quarter. And I think that vetting will fully take place over the next 30 to 60 days on there. So, if, if it's an opportunity in here that has legs and can, can be pursued further, I think that'll go identify. If it's just incompatible with the kind of site they're seeking, the kind of project that they're wanting to advance, we, we committed that we will immediately look at other kind of locational opportunities to do that.
Okay. And then, what are you anticipating in terms of a population increase with the residential areas that are being suggested over, you know, an extended time?
And what the build-out would be with this area?
Right.
Did you guys have a unit count or a bed count that we estimated with that?
We had just a little under 1,500 units that were in the, that were in the full build-out scenario.
And, and, and these types of units, though, what is it, how many people per unit is what you use?
It's, it's like, what's the joke, two and a half kids and a dog? It's, it's a multiplier. You know, it's a mix of, of one and two bedrooms. So, I, you know, it'd probably be, what do we think, Terry, 1.2 or 1.1?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that'll, that'll get more meat on that in the next 30 days as well. I think the developers, correct me if I'm wrong, and I think from a planning perspective, we'd agree, the product with the denser housing, taller housing along Riverside is probably going to be more young professional kind of housing with much more, you know, one-bedroom, two-bedroom kind of product mix, I would suspect. As you get into the townhomes and then the attached product furthest to the east, I think you'll see different options and opportunities emerge. We're just initiating engagement with the, with the, with the developers on there. So, I wouldn't want to give you numbers that aren't informed by the good market information assessments that they're doing, but I think we'll be able to, just like we've added a lot more meat since our last meeting last time, I think we'll have a lot more of that in the near future.
Okay. And then, just my last comment at this point, anyway. I personally am attracted to changing the architects substantially as you go across the river. I think that it'll take a lot of education to get people on board with that. But there, you all are experts in this and I'm not, but a way to both do the education continuously and engaging all the people on the east side that need to be engaged, obviously, as you already indicated that we were working to do. But also, what, how do you do the transition that would not be so shocking that you'd think you were in a different city? Because I think that one of the things that we have seen as a foundation of Dublin is that as people leave one adjoining community and enter Dublin, they know they have entered Dublin.
Right.
And so, we, we want to make sure that this area, that demarcation and recognition takes place.
Yeah, and I think one thing, that's a great point, in terms of that transition, that I think is key, is that what would be consistent between the historic Dublin side and potentially a, a different type of architecture would be the grain. So, when we talk about active storefronts, and we talk about balconies, and we talk about where you see activity and where you see people, as opposed to the more sort of monolithic outer belt type of, you know, office product that may have a similar number of stories and may have a similar mass, but the grain in terms of what's, what's the width of the bay and what's the storefront, what's the pedestrian texture, that'd be very much consistent, you know, on both sides. And I think it's sort of the hallmark of, of how Dublin has developed in that context.
Terry, in the next iteration, is that when we will hear how long it would take to move Riverside Drive and?
I think as part of the, the final report that will come together, there will be more detail with some of the cost estimates. What, one of the things I asked today, for example, was in that cost estimate for Riverside Drive, does that include, I mean, there's a lot of dirt being moved there, is that a basic grading of that entire site with the removal of the old road and kind of a preliminary palette for where the, where the park will go? We'll try to get as much clarity in the final report as we can with regard to those, what some of the timeframes would be for design and implementation. Obviously, land acquisition, other things on these projects would be part of that as well going forward. But I think we'll, we will be more advanced in the process, and that information will be included in the report, which we're anticipating being finalized and produced in April.
April. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
John, would you like to make some comments?
You know, I gotta say that this is an illustrative presentation that was really well-done. And I think you guys, you folks as a team, met our objectives. And you incorporate a lot of the ideas that we've been kicking around for the last five or six years, the trips to Franklin and down south. So, I think you did a really nice job with it. As hard as I was on you last time we met, I, I feel bad now. So, and, you know, and the devil's in the details. The two things that interest me and are the ability of the city to raise the finances and, of course, the private investment, you know, can this happen? So, that's what I'm going to be interested in observing and seeing if we can put this package together, because it's very exciting. It's really a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Rick?
Rick?
Well, like Mary Lee and John, I'm very impressed with your proposal, your presentation here this afternoon. But I guess moving forward, I'm very interested, like John, in the, excuse me, the economics of all this. Certainly, there's the, what the city is willing to contribute to infrastructure, you know, that sort of thing, but what I'm really interested in is what analysis have you done to date and what analysis will you continue presumably to do with respect to monitoring the interest of developers? And I want to see, do they think this is market or commercially feasible to do? Can they afford to do this in such a way as we can fill these buildings and lease out spaces at a reasonable rate? We've had some recent situations where we approved some development, the rents were too high, and the place is pretty much vacant. So it's one thing to plan something that's very fantastic, but it's another thing if it's commercially viable.
Right.
So that's sort of a question to you, but also a challenge to you.
Right. And we're asking those same questions.
Kathy, excuse me, please.
I think the nice part of having engaged private developers in the process is they've been very open with regard to the pro formas and development costs and those aspects of it. It's still, is it feasible in the marketplace? And the part of the analysis that our finance folks need to do is looking at what level of city participation does it need to make those things happen going forward. So I think we will have qualified that as well as we can as part of our final efforts here, but that'll certainly be something that'll be ongoing as these projects move forward.
The one thing I might add is that what we've heard from the developers is the idea of the park along Riverside Drive and this iconic bridge, that, you know, that being done by the city is a game changer for them, and, you know, that is what really attracts them and changes it from just, all right, yeah, we're interested in doing a development to, we're interested in doing a significant development.
Kathy?
Since I wasn't here last time, I can't really comment on the jump you made from report to report, but this is, like everyone else, has reiterated that very impressive. And however, with Franklin concerned, I think you're much better. I wasn't impressed with the place, it's much better. But I found that there was an interesting television show last night, I don't know if it was 2020 or whatever, and they talked about in China, the housing bubble, and that made me think of the same thing, like building a city and it being not occupied, and I think that might have been something you were referring to. And how do we avoid that? Or is there a way to avoid that?
Yeah. Well, I think that's one of the great things, the strong things about the framework plan that you had done already. I mean, the whole idea of creating this grid network of streets. It's the street network, the walkability, setting that up means that you can address changes in the market and still have a very walkable community. It may, you know, change the market may change how fast things happen. I think right now, there's a great market for the residential projects at a higher density and this is a great time to kind of jump in. But the nice thing about setting up and looking out for this future grid pattern is that we can respond to the market if it does change or as it changes, it will change. And I think the really important thing that we've all thought is, is getting the edge of Riverside Drive right is really critical to setting the pattern, and then thinking about how things feel in behind it is important, but kind of the next year.
Kathy, I think the, also, the, unlike China, and I did see that, that was kind of scary.
Yes, it was.
I think the market-based nature of financing here, to the extent that vacancy rates start to soften, that either on the residential or commercial side, then projects won't get financed here to move forward. So the market will self-adjust, how much you build, how quickly, when are you taking advantage of an opportunity or overbuilding and developing are things that obviously project financing and when we assess how we partner with them will have to be considered.
Is that it, Kathy? Is that it for now? Okay. Ms. Grooms?
Since the charge to us is not financial, we will probably talk about different sorts of things. So I'm wondering, on about your fourth slide or so, maybe somewhere to your sixth, you talked about the greenway that would go to Sawmill Road, and that greenway didn't line up with the footbridge, and I was wondering why the greenway wouldn't line up with the footbridge. It was considerably to the north. I don't know if you have the ability to pull a slide up quickly, but...
Right. The greenway up in here and the pet bridge here. I think there are a couple of reasons for that. As a practical matter, I think there's been some long-term planning, which I haven't been close enough to, but with respect to making sure that we can have that continuous green through there, there may be some limit in terms of where we're able to shift that. And likewise, with the pedestrian bridge, our sense was that if those aren't aligned, it means one of two things, either the pet bridge needs to move or the green needs to move. And I think with the pedestrian bridge, our concern was that it needed to land in the core of historic Dublin, and it needed to land where we could foresee, you know, a nucleus on the east side as well. And I think we've hit both of those as conceived to date, and that may change. So it may be a matter, then, of, you know, revisiting how that green connects through, or it may just be a matter of the grid and having a convenient way. Although I will say that, this is a little bit of a detail, but I think it's important, crossing Riverside Drive is going to be tough, and we will make those at-grade crossings as pedestrian-friendly as possible. There has been some discussion, both from the private development side and on our end, as to whether an underpass at some point along Riverside Drive would help that neighborhood feel like they could more easily access the park and the river. And we had tentatively looked at that greenway connection as being a point where you see this path coming through, where we could take all points east via the fact that that greenway does extend farther to the east, and bring the users, being the recreational users from further east in the development through and under to the river there. So I think there's some advantages to that.
I know it's really early, and it's probably too, putting the cart before the horse to really talk too much in detail about it, but I would be in favor of adding a second greenway or something. I think you hit the nail on the head with where the bridge goes. I think that the bridge is in the right place.
Yeah.
But maybe we need to add another greenway, you know. I could see that you would need two ways of passage to get that direction, you know, get to the east from the west.
Right.
Excuse me, Ms. Grooms, if you'll forgive the interruption, but I just, so I don't repeat something later, and I'll come right back. But you mentioned an underpass. How are we going to get through that rock?
Well, there's, that's a great question. I mean, there's expense associated with it, and we'll have to look at the engineering of the road and the height of the road relative to the type of rock and the depth of rock. I don't want to avoid the question, but it's a question for the private development, for the road, for bearing utilities, for the tunnel, it's going to be tough. But I think it's one of those things we want to try and figure out in order to complement the at-grade crossings with that route, so.
Are it still true?
Yeah.
I do remember when the developers at Mezzo, when they dug the basement under that, it was no uneasy thing, but I think it went better than they thought, but that was the message I got back. You gave us the acreage for the park on the east side, but we did not get the acreage for the park on the west side. And I think to really compare it to downtown, we need both.
Right. It's a little over nine acres.
And it was 12 on the other, so we all have almost 20 acres of park.
Right. From Bridge Street up to Indian Run on the west side, plus, yeah, plus the 12.
So either side of the net is about 20 acres?
The total, yeah. Between both sides would be about 20 acres, yeah.
One important point to make is that the ground behind 94 and 100 North High is private. Basically, that, those properties are all the way to the edge of the river. So we're showing that area as part of the west side park, but that would have to be part of the redevelopment deal of those sites.
And my last question, I think maybe you just answered it. Okay. And then my only other comment was with respect to the Greenville Bridge, it was great when we were there. It was a beautiful bridge, but the problem, I think, that we're avoiding here, that at least at the time we were there five years ago, and it certainly could have changed dramatically to date, but there was no place to go on the other side of the bridge. It went to the bridge, and then there was a sheer rock wall, and up on top of the rocks there was a school or something, and so I'm glad to see that the way we're landing the bridges will have something active on either side.
Right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Sitting here watching this, I've run out of superlatives to describe how magnificent was a great term to use for all of this. And it's, to pick up something that John said, it's fantastic to see what began as a couple of discussions and a couple of field trips five years ago turned into this. This is just utterly amazing, and I'm impressed and just blown away by the whole thing. And to Paul, I'm going to assume, because this is my experience, that after you finished talking, the silence in the room was stunned awe, because it's a beautiful bridge. And I really enjoyed your description of the process you went through to create that shape, and the flowing shape to connect the two streets seems very natural and very organic, and I like it a lot. Brian, the elevations of the buildings are amazing, and that's the kind of thing that I think we need here, because it uses the scale and the texture and the flavor of historic Dublin without repeating it. It's something different, something new, and yet it fits, and I really like that. And to pick up on something that Chris said, and maybe go a little bit further with her comment, I was thinking about the other side of the bridge on the west side, that the thing that I see is maybe the landing of the bridge and the connection needs to extend further into historic Dublin. That right now, both ends of the bridge kind of end at streets, and maybe it needs to, something needs to carry that further, and maybe it's a greenway on the east side, and maybe it's some urban version of a greenway on the other side. But I think there's room to say, we've got, I mean, that's going to be the highlight of the city when that's built, and let's carry it all the way through and enable someone to see that they're on the path to that bridge before they can ever see the bridge.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you. Wonderful, wonderful work.
Thanks. Mr. Fishman?
I think a lot's been said that, thank you, that I was thinking, I always have, I'm sure that adequate traffic studies will be done, and I'm concerned about the cooperation with Columbus, and because we're going to be dumping a lot of traffic and we're going to be getting a lot of traffic. And through the years, we've heard, you know, we love to get there, but you can't get there, you know, because it's so crowded, I'm avoiding this intersection or I'm avoiding that, so I really hope that's done. My next question is kind of curiosity. I agree with Mary Lee, I think it's magnificent. I just want to know what the timeline is, and the timeline, of course, is influenced by finances, of course, but I think that my experience with developers, they hate to do things on the if come, you know, we'd like to do this, but, you know, there's going to be a bridge. Can we get an idea, is this going to be five years, 10 years, 20 years? Keep in mind, I'm 68 also. Okay?
Got your eye on one of those units there, okay.
Yeah, so, that hasn't been talked about much, and so I'd like to know that. And I think that I share my colleagues' concern about the way the green space, the bridge is land, but also as we go into, enter Sawmill Road, how that's, I'm really concerned about how that's going to be handled, because remember, the other side is Columbus, and we really would need their cooperation and participation, and traffic is a real big concern, as I said. That's all I have right now.
I think at some point, planning staff can give more background with regard to the green space and its connectivity to the east and the existing parks that already exist there that have kind of driven this alignment. In fact, there's already, as part of the variable negotiations, the rights to purchase the green belt that is shown there. I think the other thing to stress here is that we're looking at making very desirable walkable streets that people will love to walk through, and I think for these key connection points, we probably need to go the extra mile with regard to walkability, where we're looking at distributing this traffic in the east and west positions. With regard to timing, that's the million-dollar question. As we've indicated, or 30, 40 million dollars in this case, I think there's a number of things that will drive that. To some extent, it starts with the fiscal analysis of the city in terms of what we are willing to do, what kind of commitments we can make in the near term versus longer term. Some of those fiscal commitments are directly impacted by the value of what's getting built, how much TIF income it will make, and what kind of arrangements we work with the school district with regard to picture housing types here that might allow us to do more on there. I have a high level of certainty that for the kind and quality of development that we've shown on the east side, the city will have to be making a series of commitments towards probably these three catalytic elements for that to happen. To what extent things can be phased and certain pieces of the project move forward on various elements there, we'll have to continue to assess that. I mean, we're moving towards, from planning, visioning, planning, adding a lot more detail with a lot of development input to projects that some folks want to move forward with very quickly, not just, not just some of our city representatives here. So we'll continue to try to build upon this information and what we've learned to think through how this stuff can get phased. I can't tell you in any scenario what the total build-out or how long the market would take to absorb some of these elements, but I can tell you that there are developers on aspects of this project who want to move very, very quickly and are very excited about moving quickly on things that would really be transformational. We'll try to continue those discussions as we consider your impact input this evening, your general support for the ideas, and try to move towards some implementation frameworks as well.
Thank you. Just, can you give us a hint on the bridge? In other words, are we talking decades, are we talking five years?
I mean, I think the key on the bridge is the relocation of Riverside. If you were to move towards implementing the relocation of Riverside, you could move quickly on the bridge, I think, because at a minimum, it wants to land on that park and land at a good spot. You really want there to be good developments taking place around those landing spots for that to happen and to start to have a park worth visiting. So I think the notion here of trying to identify which of these things are really catalytic, and you notice they didn't say the roundabout was the big one, that they were saying was going to unlock all that private development, and how they relate to one another, what it means in terms of land assemblage, and even your question on traffic, engineering's made it very clear to us that although they did a model for the total build-out here, they are developing a model that kind of looks at how these incremental projects come on and their impact on pieces of the system, so we will run that hand in hand with this. I think all of us in administration have a strong sense that council planning commission have a desire to advance some of these initiatives as soon as we can. It's a very big, very bold vision, unlike stuff that's happening much anywhere in the country, really, at this level in kind of suburban contexts, but I think we have an extraordinary series of assets and opportunities aligning here that can perhaps allow a significant piece of this to move forward quickly, but we need to resolve some of these phasing challenges first.
Well, I think just to add...
Did I get it answered?
I'm sure that's fully answered. Totally what you were looking for.
And I think one of the things that's very helpful for us going forward are the discussions that we hear this evening, and as we continue to get better information, get better numbers, modify where we are, do our projections with regard to what different TIF scenarios can generate, plus look at where we are with regard to the revenues or the income tax that we have reserved currently in the CIP. This is the time of year that we start getting information out again for the next five-year update, so this will be one of those things, these projects will be what will be considered as part of the next five-year CIP update. So our goal is to get you the best information that we can to see how these projects will work into the next five-year plan.
You know, one thing I'm thinking of, Warren, that 40 years ago, the city had a bold vision, and Jack Nicklaus and Ashland and 270 helped us take that bold step that we needed to take. And now we have the next opportunity, you know, almost 50 years later, we have the next opportunity to take a bold vision and put together bold leadership and pull together the community as a whole, you know, ourselves, the government community, the corporate community, and the residential community to get behind all of this, and there's a place for all of them to participate, both in terms of ideas and support, but also financially. And I think that when they see this and know what it'll bring to the community and to the value of our community, to their, you know, real estate, to the school district and everything else, that they'll really say, let's move on.
I agree. I just think sometimes real estate runs in cycles, and we want to make sure we don't miss the cycle, and that's what I was kind of interested in, and we don't want a bridge that goes to nowhere like we saw. And so I just was just interested in the timeline, I mean, because trends change and cycles come and go, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, most of the things I had in my mind have been stated already in some respects. I'll just briefly say that I too am extremely impressed. It's fantastic to see, after years of just looking at maps and colored marker, to see some design with a capital D going on the specific to our community. So it's great to see. Mary Lee's thoughts about the shift as we go across the river to an updated but still compatible architecture is something that I wholeheartedly agree with. I think that's great to see. Mr. Taylor's comments about the western landing of the bridge is something I had in my mind as well. Ms. Grooms' comment about the green belt alignment is something I was wondering about. The only additional comments, I guess, I would make is, I just wanted to add one question and a comment, I guess. The comment is that in these images, we see the connectivity of the pedestrian paths or the bikeways up and down the river, which I know was briefly mentioned, and I know it's on your guys' mind. I just want to restate, I think that's critically important. Having this dense, walkable community, or area in the center of our community is great, but if it's disconnected from the rest of the community, it does not do us any good. And I personally would love to live there, but I probably wouldn't if I couldn't get anywhere else from there. Then the question I had, and it was just alluded to in Mr. Fohler's comments, is the roundabout was not listed among one of the three catalytic projects. Is it feasible to relocate Riverside Drive without building the roundabout? Have you guys?
Yes.
You figure that out? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. But it doesn't mean you might not want to consider doing both the same.
Yeah, I'm just curious how the alignments and stuff would work. But it's great work, and I'll keep my comments to that. I appreciate it and look forward to seeing the continued evolution.
Thank you, Ms. Cram.
Most of the things I was thinking have been, already been said. So to that, I'll just, an interesting realization I've gotten from talking to people who've been asking about, hey, what's going on? What are these meetings about? And, you know, I mentioned the relocation of Riverside Drive, and they say, why? And I said, because we're thinking of putting, there's a park. And they said, well, why does Dublin need another park? And this is a lot of people of varying ages. And they said, how's it going to be different? And I said, well, that's the key. It's going to be quite a bit different than all the existing parks. And I mentioned the pedestrian bridge that would connect the two sides, and then they get a little more excited. And they said, okay, well, that's interesting, you know, tell me more about it. The one thing that I've heard from at least 10 people is that they really want access for canoes and kayaks. They want a place they can, you know, ride down the river, drop their kayak, lock it up, go up, have some ice cream or some coffee, and then go back down to their kayak. And they would just, everyone said, I would use that all the time. And I've had numerous people say, if there was such a park that had kayak access, and it was easy to get across the river, they would live in that housing, the housing on the east side. So I think it's going to be very important to make this park different than all the other parks we have, to justify why we're making this big change. But like I said, once I mentioned some of the differences, people got kind of excited about it. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Buddy?
Thank you. I just have two things. One's a question for Mary Lee. When you first spoke, I wrote down a word, and others said that they agreed with what you said, and it wasn't the word I wrote down. I thought you said stunning. Did you say magnificent or stunning? And I agree. But my only question is the east landing, and when you talked about the difficulty in then, I guess, foot traffic traversing Riverside Drive, I thought at the last presentation, we discussed multiple landing potentials, and what about the concept of the footbridge going over Riverside Drive and having, you know, different landings on both sides of Riverside Drive? Rather than, you know, if it were me, and I lived there, and I was going to come to Historic Dublin for dinner and walk back, and then have to go up to a tunnel to go under and then come back?
It's a great question, and I think you really have to make that great crossing work. When you tunnel under, which we may do, it's expense when you go over, and we've talked about that a little bit internally, it's very hard to make that route accessible, to have, you know, an ADA compliant route that would take you, something that would have enough clearance to go over a state route and then back down. There'd be the potential for quite a bit of architectural infrastructure and everything. So it's, the issue is a great point, you know, how you get that volume of traffic moving across a major roadway. But I would love to tackle that at great intersection and see what we can do to make that, you know, something that people will cross.
Because somehow I see that we're doing this fantastic job of moving traffic through this new roundabout just to stop them at a traffic light 300 feet north. What do we just do?
I think the signals are key, and, you know, and engineering staff could probably speak to this, but not just from a, not just from a traffic flow standpoint, but in terms of making that retail and the other development accessible and viable, turning movements in and out, and the ability to get in and out of parking, if there's parking structures there. So I think the signals are critical to that, and hopefully we can tame that intersection, make it palatable.
I just think of Nationwide Boulevard and High Street near all of those, and there's above, you know, above-street walkways and bridges to get around.
Yeah, yep. It could be an option to explore, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Noel.
Thank you. I think the footbridge, or pedestrian bridge, is by far the most important component, and equally the component I'm probably most excited about in terms of, for a long time, I've wanted, as a resident of Dublin, I wanted to have that foot-traffic connection from one side of the river to the other. And I think the park system in the city of Dublin is by far one of our most valuable assets in terms of what has made really good development in Dublin, and equally what's made a really good living environment for all of our residents. And it's, when I've lived here a long time, and at one time, those parks that we had in Dublin were very isolated, just little bit of quick little neighborhood parks, that are now becoming very much a fabric. They're starting to be very interconnected with each other. And I look at this as that final vision of what our entire park system can be within the city of Dublin. The other concern that I have in terms of this development is looking at Old Dublin. Old Dublin is where it is, and in terms of how it developed, the names just from Bridge Street and High Street have very historical significance of how all small developments occurred along rivers, where Front Street is, where High Street is, where Bridge Street or Main Street is. So when I look at the foot pedestrian bridge that you're banking across the river, it's changing that focus from that historic fabric within one side. So right now, it's almost equal distance past Bridge Street where the development of Historic Dublin is. How do you keep that without changing the focus now to where the pedestrian bridge is to take you across the river? And while I think the development on the other side of the river can be very different, finally, I almost think just a little bit of what's in Old Dublin has to go on that first step on the other side, so that you don't get two developments that compete against each other, and one of them gets lost. And then I was wondering if there was any, I'm sorry, it's a very long statement and long question, if there's any thought of what would go the different direction heading up towards 270 along 161 from Bridge Street, what this might bring to development in that direction, not just from across the river, but how that might expand in both directions.
Could you ask the last question again? I'm not sure. You're talking about development that moves up towards 270?
270, as it would head up Bridge Street or 161 to the 270 interchange that's existing now on 161. So the focus this evening has always been about just that little area, right?
I got you, yeah. Yeah, those are, those are good questions, and there's some longer-term discussions with respect to the disposition of the school and, you know, some other properties along that route. I think we would probably take some of the, some of the lessons that we're working through on this, and I think we'd try and apply it in that direction, in terms of the quality and type of development. But those are, I think, a little longer-range discussions that we haven't tapped into in any detail yet, but worth exploring, certainly.
Do you see any point at which, with the development of Dublin now, that it just gets the life sucked out of us by this project, by speed of something that might happen on the other side of the river and the landing that happens on that side, that those businesses on, in Old Dublin can't survive?
That's a great question. My sense is that the type of, the type of residents that would want to move into the east side development, younger, more urban population, are going to be moving there because of the authenticity of Historic Dublin. I think if you just wiped Historic Dublin off the map and mirrored what we're proposing on the east side on the west side, I think it would be a little more interchangeable with some other greenfield developments and new architecture that comes out of nothing. So I, my sense is, is that what has happened and what is happening in Historic Dublin is going to be the kernel around which all this grows, and I would think there'd be tremendous interest. In fact, we're talking about this internally, my guess is that, you know, any of the thousand units that are, would potentially get filled on the east side are going to want to come across and eat at Oscars or any other number of the one-off restaurants, then go to Applebee's on Sawmill or whatever the case may be. I think that's going to be the type of market that we're hoping to attract there.
And I didn't ask this earlier, but it's been on my mind.
Are you on, Kathy?
No, I'm not. It's been on my mind. You talk about the young professionals you're wanting to track with one or two bedrooms. Some older, 50-plus people like the environment and excitement also, yet I don't hear you mentioning that it's the one-bedroom units and ground-floor units and, you know, two-story. Is it, is there room in there for those people who want to? I know people now are moving to the Greystone Muse, who are, you know, 50-plus, so just looking out for myself, basically.
Yeah, it's definitely. In fact, my dad is moving down to Greenville, South Carolina. He loves that city so much. I know you guys have been down there, so he's definitely in that crowd. So yeah, absolutely, that would be part of the target for.
I've been an advocate for that, too, Kathy.
Thank you. Was there anything else, Vicki?
No, thank you.
Thank you all. The description of the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, and the park, and the relocation of Riverside Drive as catalytic certainly makes perfect sense. I have to say, with respect to the bridge, it's hard to envision these things. I appreciate, you know, what was shared with us this evening, and it actually, it exceeded my expectation. And, you know, so I think that's very exciting, and I can certainly understand, I think, from a private development, you know, perspective, you know, how that would be considered a game changer. I guess, you know, I had the opportunity to sort of react or follow up on some of the comments that the others have made, and they've all been good comments. The, I think it was Ms. Grooms, talked about the bridge landing to the east. You know, that's one of the memories that I have of our visit to Greenville, South Carolina. That would be concerning to me, too, and there's already been a lot of discussion this evening, you know, about how we make that passage eastward across Riverside Drive. One of the things that occurs to me, though, is at least my impression, resulting from our trip to Greenville, South Carolina, is that in spite of the perception that some, if not all of us, had regarding, you know, the effect of, you know, going to that other side of the bridge, was that that bridge was still transformational, you know, with respect to that area. That, at least, that's the impression that it left on me. So, you know, when I consider that, you know, I think the potential, you know, for what we could do here, you know, if done right, is limitless. So, you know, I think that, you know, speaks to the opportunity that we have here. Riverside Drive, you know, in this area and the crossing and the discussion regarding the roundabout, you know, I think, you know, certainly we want to be able to move traffic efficiently, you know, but I believe it's about changing expectations. You know, I don't know that we, I'm prepared, you know, to change my expectations. I don't think that we need to go through here, you know, at 40 to 50 mile an hour. You know, it's going to be a different place. You know, hopefully, it's the kind of experiences you drive through that you'll want to slow down, you know, and enjoy it, even if it's, you know, momentary, you know, whether you're going north or south. You know, so, well, I think to comment with respect to, you know, if you were, well, regardless in which direction you were going, you know, we talk about the efficiency on the roundabout on the one hand, and, you know, putting a traffic light, I don't know, 300 or 400 feet to the north, you know, to accommodate a pedestrian crossing, you know, I think are, you know, valid concerns. So, but nevertheless, you know, hopefully, you know, people's expectations can change with respect to, you know, this particular stretch of Riverside Drive. Finally, oh, also, the river accessibility. I don't recall exactly who mentioned, Ms. Cram, maybe, but I do think that's important, not only the bridge, you know, and the views that that will offer, you know, but also the accessibility to the river. That's something that is limited in many respects downtown. You know, I think that we have more opportunities, not only here, you know, but northward and so forth. But, you know, I think that's something that we want to emphasize to the extent possible. And then finally, as was stated by some others, I will be keenly interested in the financing and the long-term viability of this entire plan. You know, I expect that, I don't know who of us can predict build out, but, you know, I would think probably, you know, a minimum 30, 40 years, I'm guessing. I don't know. You know, but certainly significant activity going on in the short term. But one of the things that I do recall in, from Greenville, South Carolina, is the impression that I was left with from some of the conversation down there was that they had debt issues. You know, but I don't know, you know, where that arose from. You know, I don't know what their financial situation was, you know, when they set out to do that riverfront development and so forth. So, you know, certainly, you know, I think the comments that Mary Lee made, you know, with respect to where we find ourselves as a community, you know, 40, 50 years later, and the transformational possibilities of this particular project, you know, I think that's, you know, that's well-stated. You know, at the same time, you know, I don't want our legacy to be, you know, one of, you know, leaving our successors, you know, constrained by, you know, some debt that's hard to get out of. So, anyway, thank you.
So I'm curious, what is, are we having a third meeting, and when is it, and what are we expected to hear?
This is the last scheduled joint work session.
Oh.
One more time. This is the last scheduled joint work session on this effort here. I think in terms of the exact process for bringing closure to this phase, and we committed to a relatively expedited process, as you recall here, early on with this, I'd still like to shoot for something that has as its product, April on this. I think there's going to be a significant piece of the state-of-the-city presentation that in terms of Dublin looking forward, starts to get some of these ideas out there as well. On that, we'll look for distant opportunities to share this. But I think in terms of us thinking through what are the next phases in terms of how we advance some of these elements here, I'd like to continue the financial discussions because I think part of the questions we're hearing also relate to implementation and feasibility and impact on our long-term fiscal health moving forward. So I think over the next, you know, 30, 60 days, we'd like to advance this towards things that will really inform your capital planning decisions so that you can understand both in terms of affordability, and hopefully from this presentation, from a priority perspective, what things it makes sense to advance. And I think also- And I think also, some of the private developer activity where options exist on property today will either move to the next phase or, and become even more real than they seem to be right now. But I can tell you, private developers are significant, are investing very significant resources into planning efforts. And part of what you're seeing on the east-side developments here reflect plans that are very consistent with what they came in with before we drafted our first elements here. So we're not misaligned with regard to where private development communities are looking at proposed development forms in this district.
You know, Tim, I have a question about, I'm not sure, Terry, if you're the one to answer this or what, but as you know, I don't have a lot of patience. And, and of course, the more that we hear, the more excited that we're getting, which is great news for us and you, hopefully. But I'm, I am concerned about, because we know we have some viable development and people that are interested in moving forward, and yet I'm concerned about us saying, wait, 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 because as already Warren pointed out, there's a window of opportunity, both for us, them, and the banks. And so how do we advance and get what we want while we're still finalizing the plan?
Well, hopefully, you've seen and experienced tremendous progress from where we were 30 days ago in terms of thinking through just with what we've advanced with our team and what the private developers are putting for us. So I think the, all the pre-development planning that has to take place to make projects real is there. We've also, we don't own the real estate necessary, for example, to move or relocate and relocate Riverside Drive. There's property that would have to be assembled and acquired to do that, and businesses and property owners who would be impacted by those. So we have to be thoughtful, make sure we engage stakeholders along the way, understand what's feasible with regard to this. I think the challenge we have is trying to understand more clearly how things can be phased, or things that can move forward. Are there ways that we can accomplish and get the level of commitments that developers are going to be seeking that also understands that some of those things move forward? For example, as there's more TIF revenue to fund more public improvements, so that we can get into that piece of it. Right now, we've been trying to just align our view and vision, understand the development concepts and densities, and advance this planning. We have just received tremendous amount of financial information, so I think all the pre-development due diligence that should be occurring is taking place. And I'm hopeful we'll have a much better sense for how some of these can move forward in the very near future.
Terry, one thing to piggyback, if I could, it takes so long for us to do anything once we even decide. For instance, Emerald Parkway took like a year to design. If, for an example, we're going to try to get this timing thing on you one way or another, if, for example, we said today, we want that footbridge and we want it done now, how long would it take to have it built? With the design and the, you know?
So to acquire the real estate to relocate Riverside Drive, to design Riverside Drive, because that has to be accomplished first before the bridge lands there, and to build that project and probably designing the bridge, why that element is moving forward, separate from real estate acquisition processes, I guess I'll ask the bridge design process, the bridge designer, and Paul, on the roadside, if you'd give a sense of what you think just the engineering and construction timeframes might be for a road like that? You want to go first, Paul, on the bridge?
If the design, if the, if the design was occurring simultaneously to the land acquisition, I think we would probably be about two years from that point.
From what, to design and, for design or design and construction?
Well, the design could go on while the property's being acquired, and then probably two years after the date the land is acquired to finish the project.
So in terms of your, I don't know how these are typically delivered in terms of design-build or what the, I typically assume they're design and bid on this. So you'd be looking at a design timeframe of how much?
Well, this could all change, but the average time would probably be about a year. It could crunch down to a very, very short timeframe, maybe three months or so.
But normal would be a year on the design time?
Most likely, and that we would stage the construction in certain time of the year. So we would have somebody wait in that time, and probably about two years for the construction of the bridge.
Okay.
So what would be the downside if we said, if we go ahead and design it? What would be the downside if we said, go ahead with designing?
Well, I think you'd have to design the road first on that. So you'd be designing both the relocated Riverside and the, I think what you need from us is an entire strategy for implementation that relates to real estate acquisition, design, and implementation on that. And that's the kind of stuff we hope to have in the final report here. Okay?
Because I thought we already said we were going to design Riverside Road, not.
We've done preliminary engineering. You saw this road move dramatically. The park increased by twice because of level of movement in Riverside Drive. So you're doing all the early-stage preliminary engineering work with regard to that. But actually, in terms of cutting loose the formal engineering design on this, that would be a process where city would bring forward the budget request for that, and we'd move forward and make that happen. That would also define more clearly, you know, right-of-way and property impact, but it's pretty clear from these scenarios for property other than what we already own, the general format within which they're impacted. So we bring to you also some strategies with regard to land acquisition?
Tim, if I may, to add to Merrily's, excuse me, Merrily's comment or question on timing, it sounds like we do have, one, we've adopted the Bridge Street corridor plan, not plan, but also plan, but also the code. And it's my understanding that a concept plan has come before, well, it's come before council, P and Z, been back and forth with staff. We hear about 94 North High Street where there's some interested persons that want to develop that. Where are they with their developments? And is this planning holding back those plans of those people to move forward?
No, they clearly are not. I think 94 North High right now, as we indicated to you before, is still exploring with the developer development opportunities that are possible. The original concepts we shared with you assumed integration of 100 North High. That has not happened. So now, separate alternatives are being looked at. Jerry Byrd's project at the south is initiating through the processes internally, and I expect you'll see more, more formal action on that proceed. The projects on the east side, I think, are going through the due diligence with property, with developers who have real estate under contract with contingencies, and they're getting, it was pointed out to me by Darren, the level of kind of assistance we're able to provide them by bringing in the services of MKSK to assist with that design effort here, I think, has advanced and expedited that more than anything possible because we've been able to get both their design team and our design team fully engaged in that.
Well, can we anticipate an application or someone putting a shovel in the ground sometime this year?
I think the most project-ready proposal that we've heard about, and it's, can't control whether things get financing or not, I think Jerry Byrd's process has started to come in with staff, initiate those discussions on that. And I think the, the other projects will depend upon, these are very involved partnership agreements. And if we can get a framework from largely tax increment financing, I think development ideas will line up relatively quickly. And performance of the city on these public improvements and address the fiscal concerns that you've raised and the mayor has raised here, an appropriate strategy, I think these could move quickly. But I think there's real important financial implications we need to make sure that you guys fully understand.
Terry, I believe I heard you reference the final report.
Yes, we're looking for that in April, probably mid to late April here for the final, actually, published report. And that will be designed, that will be developed as the urban design framework for this piece of the district, and I think it will have met its objective in terms of guiding both far more definition to the public improvements as well as to the private development in this area.
Do we anticipate a special meeting to discuss that final report?
I'd like to bring forward to you your next council meeting, maybe what the going-forward strategy is, since this is the last scheduled work session that we had in this effort, and bounce off of council, maybe a strategy for additional reviews and engagement going forward.
Okay. All right. So we covered everything we intended to cover this evening? You got the feedback you wanted? So it's a wrap? All right, well, thank you very much, Darren, to your team, and thanks to staff, thanks to the Planning and Zoning Commission and council. We're adjourned. Good evening.